Good evening. I'll call the zoning board of appeals meeting of Tuesday, August 11th to order. I'm Chairman Paul Evans. Glad to have everybody here. Thanks for attending. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody to recite together our country's pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Schludow, can we have the roll call, please?
Board Member Allen?
Here.
Board Member Butts? Board Member Gesund?
Here.
Board Member Krug?
Here.
Board Member McAlpine?
Here.
Board Member Euler? This Ward, you're muted. Here, I'm muted. There we go. Board Member Ward? Alternate Hatchet? Chair Evans?
Here. Thank you. Okay, we have an agenda before us. Do we have any proposed changes or corrections from staff or any member of the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda submitted for tonight's meeting, August 11th,
Support by Mr. Allen for Ms. McAlpine's motion. Any discussion? Ms. Schludow, the roll call vote, please.
Gesund?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Yes.
Here you are. Welcome. Allen?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Okay, our next item is approval of our previous meeting of this board, July 13th, 2020. Does anyone have any corrections or changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as submitted.
Move to approve the minutes of the meeting of July 13th, 2020, as submitted.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Allen, support by Mr. Krug. Any discussion? Ms. Schludow?
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Come back. Allen?
Yes.
Gesund? Ms. Ward, are you there?
I am.
Okay.
Uh, yes.
Yes, okay. Evans?
Yes. Okay, the next item on our agenda is old business number one, and this matter was postponed from our July 13th meeting. Interpretation of commercial message for painted mural. Ms. Schludow, could you give the board a summary as to where things are at?
Yeah, so, um, this, as you know, this item came before you last month. Um, there was some significant changes or discussions that took place shortly thereafter. The hiccup with the discussion was the interpretation of the commercial message, and our previous discussion with the applicant was that she intended to use, um, the mural as part of her overall merchandising for sale profit on materials such as coffee mugs, t-shirts, totes. During the course of our subsequent discussions after the meeting, um, she did, she agreed that she would not be using, um, the mural or any depiction thereof on, um, on any for sale for profit merchandise. In order to, uh, one of the components that we drafted was a mural maintenance and installation agreement. Um, this was put together by myself and our city attorney, um, in which, uh, the installation and the maintenance are, um, very explicitly spelled out on who is responsible for the mural, who's responsible for maintaining, installing, um, and what that mural can be used for. And we called out specifically in that agreement that the mural can be used for, um, some promotional materials such as putting it on her website, putting it on social media, drawing attention to it in that way, but it cannot be used for anything for sale for profit merchandise. Um, Ms. Maybe has agreed to that, and they submitted the signed agreement that was included in your packet. The way that this application has come forward, I understand caused a little bit of confusion last month, so I'd like to clarify a little bit more. All of the murals that have gone up in the last five to six years of the DDA mural program, that program is very explicit in their review process and also in the fact that the DDA is paying for those murals to go up. Most of the time, the property owner isn't even consulted, I'm not, let me take that back. They are asked by the DDA if they would approve a mural going up on their, on their building, but they are not the ones that are spearheading or leading the effort. Uh, the DDA is the ones who pay for it, find the artist, commission it, and are ultimately responsible. That's where the, um, component of the copyright came in that we discussed at length last month. Um, this mural or this rendering is very different in the fact that Ms. Maybe, the applicant, is fully funding this, this, uh, this rendering, this mural on the side of her building. She is not going through the DDA for any funding or, or anything of that nature. So by ordinance in the definition, um, this item has to come to the zoning board of appeals to determine if there is a commercial message. If there is not a commercial message, then it is determined to be a mural and it can go forward. We don't have any other review process or mechanism through the city. If it is determined to have a commercial message, then it is subject to the wall sign requirements of our zoning ordinance. I hope I have cleared up any, any confusion or anything. This is a, this is a very different case in the fact that, um, everything that has come from the DDA is their project. Um, they have their own set of standards that was adopted by resolution by city council, which is why none of these have come before the ZBA before now. So I hope that, uh, I hope that clears things up.
Yes, I have one question, and I'll turn it over to the board members for any additional questions. So if I understand it right, it's not eligible for the DDA mural program due to the funding source, but not the message. And if the funding source, um, was handled by the DDA, then the ZBA would never see this to make this interpretation. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. The, if it went through the DDA mural program, the DDA would be commissioning, the artist would be responsible for, for the overall design of, of it. The design review committee would be, um, leading the, what they wanted the mural to look like and the overall aesthetic and, uh, within the community and on that building. So like I said, this is very different in the fact that, that the applicant, Ms. Maybe, went and found her own artist, uh, is fully funding this, uh, this project from, on her own and is not going, uh, to the DDA for either upfront payment or any kind of reimbursement.
Thank you. Do any members of the board have any questions for Ms. Schludow? Ms. McAlpine?
If, did the, um, in the process of the, the subsequent conversations that happened, if the DDA was, um, funding this, would they have approved the image? Is this something that they like and they would want to see? Or is it outside of the type of murals that they would like to put in? And I understand it's not, doesn't fall into their program. I'm just curious because if we want to create a cohesive kind of look of murals that are a variety of different looks, does this fit with what their kind of guidelines or direction is from a thematic standpoint?
Right. And I did, I did speak to, um, Executive Director Jennifer Finney way early on in this process and asked her that exact question. Um, and she said that this would have been something that they had approved, um, or would have, would like to see in the community. We got hung up on the, uh, discussion of putting it on for sale merchandise. That's where the, um, that's where that line was drawn. But given the fact that she has signed the maintenance agreement, given our, our subsequent conversations with the applicant that she's not using it for, for sale, uh, for profit merchandise, um, that kind of eliminates that, uh, that branding or that part of their, um, overall marketing strategy.
But overall, they, they like the look of it?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was my wrong way to respond. I apologize.
But all good. Got where we're going to go.
Mr. Allen?
Okay. Um, well, really, our interpretation has been interpreted for us with the installation of this agreement, the signed agreement, that strictly forbids using that image on for profit items. And I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Erin for working through that, to put that together. It's cast a lot different light on this than it did at our last meeting.
Thank you. Do any of your board members have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I do see that the applicant is here. Ms. Maybe? Can you hear me? You're muted right now.
And can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, okay. Well, as you know, we had extensive discussion, uh, at the last meeting. Is there anything you'd like to add before the board, uh, continues to deliberate this matter?
No, there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes. So no, there isn't any more that I would like to add. I, I really appreciate, um, the, the hard work really that Erin has really put in and, um, you know, just to give me a second opportunity to, um, make the mural go. So I'm just really happy, you know, that we're all here again, and I hope that won't take up too much of your time again. But, um, no, there's not too much I need to add.
Thank you very much then. Do any members of the board have any questions for Ms. Maybe? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'll turn it back over to the board. We did hold a public hearing on this matter at our last meeting, so we're not required to hold another one now, so, um, Ms. McAlpine, yes?
Oh, I just was ready to make a motion.
Yes, okay. So, uh, at this time, I'll entertain any additional discussion or motion. Ms. McAlpine?
Um, I would make a motion to, um, allow the applicant to proceed with the mural, given the agreement we have in place, that there is, does not contain a commercial message and that, um, it would be a welcome addition to the mural, existing murals we have and the building. So I'm in favor of them, uh, moving forward with the mural.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Krug. Any additional discussion by the board? Not hearing or seeing any requests. Ms. Schludow?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Ward.
I do have a question for staff. Uh, my question is, um, right now, the, the sign ordinance permits 84 square feet. This, uh, wall is 840 square feet. And by approving this tonight, we waive that, uh, or we grant a variance that allows the, um, uh, uh, Ms. Tamika to, um, use the entire wall for their, um, mural, correct?
Erin, I'll answer that, and if you need to jump in, feel free. Uh, thank you, Ms. Ward. We're making an interpretation whether or not this contains a commercial message, and if we interpret that it doesn't contain a commercial message, then it doesn't qualify as a sign, and therefore, no variance is needed. By de facto, it would be approved by the DDA mural program and, uh, not the zoning ordinance. I heard my name. Who, who said my name? Ms. Ward, does that address your question?
Ms. Ward, did we lose you?
Uh, no, I hope not. I'm here. Um, I, I, uh, thank you, Paul, for, um, the explanation. I appreciate that.
Okay, so it looks like we're ready for a, a vote.
Ms. McAlpine?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
No.
Allen?
Yes.
Gesund?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Okay, so this board has interpreted that this, uh, this image, this mural is, does not contain a commercial message, it is therefore not a sign. So we will move on to item number two, which is a request for a variance. And Ms. Schludow, I do have a procedural question. Clearly, item two was contingent upon item one. If the board were to determine that this was a sign, we determined that it wasn't. What's our disposition here?
Well, therefore, the, um, application or the, the request for the two variances for, that's attached to item number two, um, can be withdrawn by the applicant. Um, so I would ask the, the applicant if they would like to withdraw their, their request for those variances, given the determination of the zoning board of appeals that the rendering that they have submitted does not contain a commercial message.
Okay. Ms. Maybe, did you hear that? Would you be willing to withdraw number two?
Yes, correct. I will withdraw both, both variances.
Great. Okay, well, let the record show that, uh, Ms. Maybe has withdrawn, and I'll move on to item number three. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Ms. Maybe. So item number three is an application for several variances for property at 3082 Coolidge Highway, which is commonly known as the Vibe Credit Union. Ms. Schludow, could you give us a summary, please?
Uh, yes. So I would like to, uh, summarize or draw attention to my August 4th, 2020 review letter. Uh, the applicant is Mark Zimmerman of Mark Zimmerman Designs on behalf of Vibe Credit Union. Um, this property is located at 3082 Coolidge Highway. Um, they are requesting two variances this evening. Uh, one is to reduce the minimum parking requirement for the existing building by three parking spaces, and the second is to install a second advertising sign that's facing Coolidge. Um, I have provided a summary of the requirements therein, the, an aerial of the existing lot, and we also have, uh, the renderings proposed by Mark Zimmerman in Mark Zimmerman Designs, as well as the rendering of the, uh, proposed pylon sign that they would like to, uh, install along Coolidge. So I'll just go through the summary of, of what they're requesting. So, uh, Vibe Credit Union is proposing to redesign their existing parking lot. Uh, they want to include some additional landscaping and some site improvements. Um, this would include changing the existing perpendicular, um, stalls to more angled and allow for some green, green area, um, within the site along the, um, southeastern corner, um, and along Coolidge there. Uh, this is in wanting to enhance the aesthetic appeal of their site, not only for the patrons that come to their, their bank, but the adjacent properties and certainly those who are driving up and down Coolidge. Um, by ordinance, um, we, there are a number of standards for bank or financial institutions. Uh, one per 200 square feet of useful floor area, three per teller station, and then two per the ATM. They are proposing to install, uh, bike, uh, bicycle racks, which allows for a reduction of two parking spaces, but even with, uh, with that, their requirement is 37 parking spaces. Um, with the redesign of the site, um, they are providing 34 parking spaces. Um, per the zoning ordinance, the applicant must demonstrate a practical difficulty. There are, um, standards of review that are included in your packet here, in which I go through, um, in some detail. Uh, I just want to draw attention that the Fire Marshal and DBW has also reviewed these plans, and they found, uh, no issues with the change in the layout or the configuration of the parking area in relation to, um, their specified services. So it won't cause any kind of, uh, public safety or public works in, uh, issues in the future. Uh, the second variance that they're requesting is for an installation of an additional sign facing Coolidge. For our ordinance, um, a business is allowed one sign facing a street. So with this corner lot, they're allowed one sign on Coolidge and one side allowed on Earlmont. They already have an existing wall sign that's facing Coolidge. They anticipate having a wall sign to face Earlmont, but given the close proximity of the building to the sidewalk, um, they have, uh, noticed that there are a number of people who drive right by and don't see it. So they are requesting a variance so that they can install a second, uh, or a second sign, but one pylon sign that will be located at the southwest corner of the site. Uh, this will be set back, uh, far enough away from the drive aisle, so it won't cause any, um, issues or concerns from the pedestrians going in and out of the building, uh, but will draw attention to motorists as they travel up and down Coolidge. Uh, again, the zoning ordinance is very clear about the standards of review, and I have included those in the, uh, in the packet for you, um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Uh, before I do open it up to questions, I have a, a comment that I'd like to float to the board. Would it make sense for us to perhaps consider these requests individually, given that there could be different factors that may impact in different ways?
Absolutely.
Yes, yes.
I guess I'll ask it a different way. Is there anyone who doesn't want to do that? Please raise your hand or let me know. Okay, then, um, I believe the way to do this is that someone needs to make a motion to, and I think the technical term is bifurcate, these matters, so it's clear in a minute that we split this up. Uh, does somebody want to make a motion of that effect? Ms. McAlpine?
I will make a motion that we bifurcate, uh, item number three, application PB 0520, and consider both matters in the original petition from the, um, applicant separately to make the discussions, uh, more fruitful. Support.
And we have support. Who, who supported?
Uh, Ward.
Thank you. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Ms. Schludow?
Ward?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Gesund?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Okay. So the first one we're going to consider is the numerical parking request, and do any members of the board have any questions for Ms. Schludow?
Uh, I do.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Um, the, uh, it would seemingly be the trend nowadays. I realize we haven't made any changes to our rulings, but it would seem to be the trend. The banking is very different than it was 10, 15 years ago, and probably would require less parking, because most people don't do face-to-face banking anymore. And on a personal note, I, I don't believe I've ever seen that lot full during a normal workday. Am I on base or off base, or Erin?
Um, well, well, I haven't done a full analysis on what, you know, other communities are doing, but just given the change in how banking is operating over the last 10, 20 years, um, a lot of it has gone online. So the, all of the teller stations that need to be used, uh, for daily transactions are not being utilized anymore. Um, ATM bankings are still being used, but for the most part, those are drive-up. Um, so one, you know, there's not a whole lot of people going into the actual building to use those. So yeah, I would say that there has been a shift in what a bank or financial institution would require for, for their parking, just based on the, the changes of, of society. But, um, I don't have any solid numbers that, um, other communities have done or any analysis to, to follow that up with at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing or hearing none, uh, it's Mr. Zimmerman. Are you here?
Uh, yes, I'm here. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Okay, at this point, um, know that the board has read your application in detail, and many of us have visited the site as well. Uh, is there anything you'd like to, uh, tell the board about the parking requirement?
Uh, I, I, I think you've touched on, uh, all the major issues, um, and yes, indeed, uh, the online banking is, is something they're promoting, uh, rather heavily, and so that's, that's the trend. Um, and I should just back up a minute and say that this is part of an overall project where we're renovating the exterior and the interior of the building, and so that, the whole intent of the project is to give this a, a total refresh for the site. So it made sense for us to, uh, take a look at the parking, see what we could do to improve, enhance, um, the ability to, uh, circulate through the site, and then, um, also to look at, uh, what we could do to perhaps sweeten up the, the landscape with respect to, um, more permeable area. And so that's one of the major things that we're, uh, trying to accomplish here is, we're adding about 1,600 additional square feet of landscape area to the site, so trying to take the edge off of, uh, the sea of asphalt that exists currently south of the building. And I think this'll, the proposed design that we have will, will, uh, take care of that nicely.
Hey, thank you. Do any members of the board have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Ward?
Uh, my question, what exactly, um, are the plans to refresh the front of the building? Um, and will it dramatically change the appearance of the building?
I can, I can take that. The, um, the applicant has already submitted plans for a facade change. Um, those went to the planning commission, uh, what month are we in? In June, um, and they were approved by, by the planning commission. So, uh, shortly after that, that meeting, the, um, there was a discussion about, uh, doing some, some landscaping and things of that nature, but, uh, they've already, uh, received approval. The design review committee through the DDA has also looked at it, um, and have seen no objections to their proposed changes.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, Erin.
Thank you. Do any other members of the board have any questions for the applicant? I do have one, Mr. Zimmerman. If possible, can you talk a little bit about, uh, the unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property? That's one of our standards that we have to find our met. Could you, could you talk about that a little bit as to what perhaps is unique with the property?
Sure. Well, um, typically, um, we're, we're, we're talking about a walkable, uh, community here, but we have a, I guess, a property that's, uh, it's about seven tenths of an acre, and so, um, it seems like there's a fair amount of space there, but it's bounded by residential to the east and, and, uh, commercial property to the south, uh, with screen wall in place that I guess was part of an earlier project, uh, probably done when it was a previous, uh, credit union. Vibe has owned the property for 10 or 12 years. So, um, I think the thing that's unique is we kind of have an urban setting with a, a kind of a suburban, uh, automobile-focused, um, arrangement at the moment, and one of the things we're attempting to do is, uh, uh, through introduction of hedge row, kind of cutting back a little bit on, um, some of the parking, uh, try and right-size the, uh, the entire project so that it, it serves- project so that it serves their current needs and the needs going into the future. So if we look at additional places to try and, we've done other schemes where we've looked at parking solely and done several studies, and there are ways to get more parking in the site, but it kind of means that you sort of land up right where you, back where we are with a property that has maybe overparked, never gets fully utilized. And we thought we had an opportunity here to, I think, do a design that is in the spirit of the overall master plan for Berkeley and for that district.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McAlpine, yes?
Just to expand, unfortunately, our job is to ensure that these requests meet all five criteria. And to further add to Mr. Evans' comment or question, right now, we know the credit union exists, it works, it functions. How can we be convinced that by reducing the number of parking, there is a practical difficulty, and by reducing the number of parking spots, it will eliminate that practical difficulty for you to use the property? Because while I appreciate making it look nice and the impact of landscaping and taking away some of that, you know, asphalt parking lot, that doesn't necessarily mean that the property can't function in the way it is now. So that is our objective. So I don't know if you can add on or give us some more information on how we can explain or we can feel comfortable that this does, that this fits that criteria.
I'll try and address it this way. One of the criteria for ordinance for parking is three stalls for each teller. And one of the things, and I've done a number of these for Vibe and I've done other financials, that would be, that's kind of a scenario that really doesn't ever materialize. Two of the tellers serve the drive-through, and there might be three other tellers. And so I guess there's, and I'm not sure how ordinance comes to be, sometimes these are things that go way back in the past, and they sort of live on, and oftentimes, they make good sense. And I'm not questioning this, I'm just saying that what goes on here at the moment is that there's sort of trending for online banking. Two of the tellers that we're providing six stalls for don't even really service the walk-up members, they service the drive-through lanes. And so I think that's kind of my way of saying that I think we've covered, for the most part, all the bases with respect to parking. I know in some of your, I'm not sure what you would consider peer communities, we're typically doing on a slightly smaller footprint for a building, maybe in the neighborhood of 24 to 28 stalls for a building of maybe 4,000 square feet. So we're a little bit over that in terms of, we're about 5,000 square feet gross. So this is maybe a little heavy at the moment on parking as ordinance stands, and we just kind of look at this for the way things seem to be unfolding. So that's kind of my explanation.
Ms. McAlpine, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I just, I guess I understand that we may be requiring more parking. I frequent the credit union, the ATM. It is never busy. I don't think you need half the parking spots you have, but unfortunately, we have five criteria that we have to meet. And one of them is simply that there, without this variance, there is a practical difficulty, and you could not use the property as you would like to use it. And unfortunately, I'm struggling because the property is used right now, given the current situation, and I don't understand how taking away parking would allow you to operate any differently than you're operating now. And unfortunately, we don't get the luxury of saying, well, we like it. Our criteria is black and white, and there's five things we have to be able to justify that you meet.
Gotcha. Mr. Allen, I see that your hand's up, by the way. Go ahead, Mr. Zimmerman.
Okay, thank you. Well, a practical difficulty, I see what they're trying to do here. They're trying to create, they're trying to convert impermeable surfaces to permeable surfaces. And a practical difficulty in doing that is they've maxed out on the parking. So it would be a sea of asphalt and continue to be a sea of asphalt. And to me, in my own mind, that is a practical difficulty if we're trying to move with the times. You know, that's one of the things I talk about when we, people ask to put in a new long driveway as I worry about the impermeable surfaces. And this is a good way to start that out, I think. And that is a practical difficulty if you've run out of space.
And board members, we'll have more time to deliberate. Certainly, we've got to do the public hearing, and if there's any additional comments that come in that could impact what we think, we certainly want to hear those. Did anyone else on the board have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Gazan? And then Ms. Ward, you're next.
Just kind of a wild thought here. Would the applicant be willing to change their configuration inside from six tellers to five? So that this would never, that would eliminate the need for three parking spaces, and they would fit the requirements?
That would be a question I would have to take to the upper management at the credit union. My gut tells me that that's the right, six is the right number, but I'd be glad to carry the question forward.
Okay.
All set, Mr. Gazan?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Ward, do you still have a question?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Have we received any kind of correspondence from the neighbors to the east of the building? Have they either accepted the potential change, or have we had objections?
And we can answer it in just a moment when I open public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members have any questions for the applicant? Okay, Mr. Zimmerman, thank you very much for sharing your thoughts with us and answering our questions. At this time, I'll move on to public comment. The public has the opportunity to speak on this matter, to speak during public comment. Participants in the webcast can utilize the raise hand function by selecting manage participants on the bottom of your dashboard, and then select the more button in the bottom right-hand corner. Our moderator will call your name aloud and unmute you so that you can speak. For those that have called in, you can be placed in the queue for public comment by selecting star nine. Our moderator will announce the last four digits of your phone number for recognition and unmute you so that you can speak. Participants will have three minutes to speak, as they would if we were meeting in person. Once your three minutes are up, you will be muted by our moderator. Additionally, comments can be submitted at this time to zoning@berkeleymish.net. And we'll also have the opportunity to submit public comments at that website for reading later in the meeting. Your email must be able to be read in less than three minutes. Given the circumstances with the virtual space, we may not be able to read through all of the email comments, but know that we will have them stored and acknowledged on the public record. So participate in public comment. You can dial by phone at 1-312-626-6799 and enter the meeting ID 952-8278-4200. Now, at this time, we'll review public comments. Aaron, can you begin with any emails or other correspondence we received prior to the meeting?
I had a lengthy phone call with one of the residents who live immediately to the east of the property. She didn't want to provide any written correspondence to that effect, but we did walk through what the proposal was going to be doing. We did receive a couple of emails asking questions as to what was going to be proposed, but there wasn't any, anything that wanted to be submitted formally to the ZBA.
Thank you. Okay. And Ms. Mathis, do we have anyone waiting in the queue?
Not at this time, sir. Oh, yes, we do. Somebody's hand just raised. All right, Michael, I'm going to go ahead and ask you to unmute. All right.
Okay. Can you hear me?
We certainly can. You have three minutes to speak, starting now.
Oh, yeah. Hi, my name is Mike. I live directly across the street, across Earlmont from the bank. And I was just curious where I could go to see a plan of what was proposed. I didn't see anything in the letter I was sent. I'm just curious if, for example, is the brick wall that exists going to be removed? Is the driveway going to be changed, that configuration, how it kind of shoots you out back on the Coolidge, is that going to be changed? Or maybe those questions are really what I would have if somebody has an answer to that.
Yeah, and I'll ask Ms. Schludo, who's familiar with the plans, even plans that didn't come before this board, to answer that for you.
Yes, of course. So the plans are all located on our city website under community development. So you can go there and you can see the whole thing. But the masonry wall will stay intact. The entrance and exits, ingress, egress on Earlmont and on Coolidge will stay the same. There isn't anything proposed to change on that side, nor on the eastern side of the site itself. Most of the parking configuration changes with the landscaping will be immediately to the south of the building.
Okay, I'll go on the website and check that out.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for your comment. Ms. Mathis, do we have anyone else waiting to speak?
She has no comment.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Well, at this point, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Does anyone have any comments or thoughts on this that they'd like to talk about? None?
I'll jump in here.
Mr. Gazan? My apologies, I can't hear you.
Right now, the way our requirements are and the way the ordinance reads, it's hard to see a practical difficulty with adding landscaping or a green belt and taking away parking. I wish there was, we have where they get a parking credit for a bike rack. I wish there was a way in the ordinance, maybe in the future, where they could get a credit for parking for installing landscaping and reducing the permeable surface of them.
I see that Mr. Allen's hand is up. I did not hear what Mr. Gazan said. Aaron, would you speak, just to, so I can check something?
Yes, can you hear me?
Got it.
Can you hear me now?
I can. Mr. Gazan, I apologize, I didn't hear anything you said. Is it suitable to ask you to repeat that?
Yeah, I was just, I just wish that the way the requirements are now, I wish that it's hard to grant this, but they, they get a, they get a credit for a bike rack. I wish there was a way in the ordinance that they get a credit for lessening the permeable surface of the parking lot and installing a green belt. But the way it reads now, there is really no practical difficulty.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, your hand is up.
Yes. Ms. Schludo, I remember there was some discussion about having a 10% buffer on amount of parking spaces required. Has that gone anywhere, or is that still sitting in stall?
We are still having ongoing discussions about that. There, we haven't set a public hearing through the planning commission that has gone through several rounds of discussion and changes, but it is something we're working through, but that could take considerable more time, and this was what the applicant wanted to move forward with.
Okay. I just had that, I knew that had been discussed at one point.
Ms. McAlpine?
I have to echo Mr. Gazan's comments, and as I indicated before, unfortunately, we have to prove that without this variance, you can't operate the credit union. And as we know, it is functioning. Our job is always very difficult because while we like something, that doesn't really matter. There's five criteria we have to meet. So I would also agree with Mr. Gazan that it's going to be very difficult to approve the request as presented. I do believe that his suggestion of seeing if you could reduce the number of teller stations was a good thought, and maybe the petitioner would like to table this item until he can further speak with the management regarding that. And therefore, if that was the case, we would not even have to bring this back to the ZBA.
Well, thank you. And my comment, and know, Mr. Zimmerman, that if the board chooses to table this matter, we have to do a motion and a vote. But I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I think this is a wonderful proposal. I think that adding landscaping and reducing the amount of parking is excellent for the community. I believe that financial institutions like this as a whole have a significant need for less parking than what the city requires. I certainly concur that, as proposed, this would certainly function as a bank and be even more of an asset to the community. However, I am challenged to find that it does meet all the criteria, and I am not inclined to vote in favor of this variance relative to Ms. McAlpine's comment. If somebody would like to motion for a postponement of this matter, we could certainly do that. And at least now, the applicant has some feedback from board members. And with that being said, do any other board members have any other comment or feedback that they'd like to share? Mr. Allen? You're muted, Mr. Allen.
I don't have anything else to share, but I would like to make a motion at this time, if that is acceptable.
Certainly is.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone until we get further information from Vibe Credit Union as to the number of teller spaces, and I would like to postpone that to the September meeting, if possible.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Support.
Support by Ms. McAlpine?
Give it to Mr. Gazan, give his original idea.
So be it. Let the minutes reflect that. Okay, any discussion? Okay, looks like we're ready for a vote. Ms. Schludo.
Allen?
Yes.
Gazan?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Okay, so this has been postponed to our September meeting. Our next item is for the same property in regards to the sign. So Mr. Zimmerman? So, Mr. Zimmerman, uh, do you have anything to say about the practical difficulties and relative to this second request, the sign?
I don't know where to begin. So, uh, I think Erin summarized the challenges with the signage at the moment. Um, my concern is there are tree wells in a couple of locations that don't have trees in them. Uh, you have a very active tree board. Someday, there probably will be trees that block signs that are very difficult to see. At the moment, um, I know that it's, uh, when it comes to being uh, visible, if you're driving to the site, and the first time I went to this site eight years ago, I drove right past it because it's a very challenging thing to see. And so, um, until you're upon it, uh, being a sign that's a wall-mounted sign, uh, and it's parallel to the, to the traffic, whether you're driving north or south on Coolidge. So, um, it helps um, to have a sign that's um, in our case, a pylon sign, so that it's something that can be read, it's perpendicular to the, to the flow of traffic and it just winds up being something that's a more practical response to um, providing signage.
Thank you. Do any members of the board have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Allen?
Yes, uh, Mr. Zimmerman, I, you know, I, I'm hearing what you're saying and I agree with you 100%. I, I drove by it the first time. I used it as well. Um, I'm not really sure what the necessity is to keep the sign that's already wall-mounted on a road that you're already having difficulty seeing the sign coming past it. I would think that you might want to put that around the corner on the side that's allowed. You know, I, I just don't understand why you would want to leave the existing sign up there if you're having a much better pylon sign installed.
So our hope was to leave the sign. Uh, we're going to re-clad that elevation in the building with metal panel and limestone, give it a little more height. And do an additional sign on the corner of Earlmont because we're allowed a sign on the north elevation of the building. That is the front of the building in many respects since Coolidge is the major um, frontage. Um, we made an attempt to do a sign facing south on the building, but that was not allowed. That was uh, something that was discussed during planning, uh, in our planning presentation. And um, so this is, um, I think where we've uh, wound up with uh, our solution.
Thank you, sir. Do any other members of the board have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Ward?
Um, I would agree with Mr. Allen. Um, I see no reason to keep the uh, existing sign that is on the west side of the building. Um, and let me direct my question to Ms. Schludo. If that sign uh, that is currently on the building uh, was to be removed, um, would it be possible then for the applicant to put in the pylon sign without the necessity of a variance?
Yes, it would be. The, the pylon sign, as it's designed in its uh, proposed location, the height, the size, the area, um, all conforms to the standards of the zoning ordinance. It's just the, the number that are, uh, is for the additional sign being proposed on Coolidge is what is needing the, the variance this evening.
Thank you.
Any other members with any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. So I'll now move on to public comment. The public will have the opportunity to speak on this matter, to speak during public comment. Participants in the webcast can utilize the raise hand function by selecting manage participants on the bottom of your dashboard and then select the more button in the bottom right-hand corner. Our moderator will call your name aloud and unmute you so that you can speak. For those that have called in, you can be placed in the queue for public comment by selecting star nine. Our moderator will announce the last four digits of your phone number for recognition and unmute you so that you can speak. Participants will have three minutes to speak as they would if we were meeting in person. Once your three minutes are up, you will be muted by our moderators. Additionally, comments can be submitted at this time to zoning@berkeleymish.net where residents and community members can submit public comments as well. Your email must be able to be read in less than three minutes. Given the circumstances with the virtual space, we may not be able to read through all of the email comments. But know that we will have them stored and acknowledged on the public record. To participate in public comment, you can dial by phone at one three one two six two six six seven nine nine and enter the meeting ID nine five two eight two seven eight four two zero zero. At this time, we'll review public comments. Erin, you may begin with any emails or other correspondence you've received prior to the meeting.
I have not received any uh, correspondence related to, to this variance for, related to the sign.
Thank you. Ms. Mathis, do we have anyone, members of the public in the queue?
Not at this time.
No, okay. All right, well, it doesn't appear that we have anyone who wishes to comment. So I'll close the public hearing and I'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Mr. Krug?
Yeah, I just, um, after listening to what some of you have been saying, it kind of the first thought when I went by the building was to remove the sign off the front of it, let the pylon sign take place of that, add the one on Earlmont. Um, one thought in my mind was you take the sign down and then you've got this spot on the wall that, you know, shows the sign's been hanging there. But they're changing the face it on the building. Something could be done with that area, which it sounds like they're gonna do some stone metal on it anyways. Um, so I, I think that would definitely be the way I would lean is to not grant this and have that other sign removed off the front and let the pylon sign take over for it.
Great, thank you. Ms. McAlpine?
Um, I would echo everyone's comments. And once again, going back to the previous item, it's very difficult to prove a practical difficulty um, that requires us to approve the sign as it is. I do believe the recommendation to move the sign off the facade on Coolidge, move that to Earlmont and put the new proposed sign on, um, Coolidge is the best possible plan. And that is something that I would support. So I cannot approve or support the motion uh, or the petitioner's requests.
Yeah, I would concur with the comments I've heard. Clearly, there are some alternatives and I too am finding difficulty in seeing that there is a practical difficulty with this property that would justify the variance request. So I am not in favor of it for reasons stated by my colleagues as well. Are there any other members of the board that would like to speak? Okay, see, none. It looks like you might be ready for a motion if someone would like to offer one.
I'll offer.
And Mr. Allen?
I would like to make a motion that we not approve the request for the additional sign and stand pat based on the fact that the five standards have not been met in this case.
Okay, we have a motion to deny the variance. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Krug? Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Ms. Schludo?
Jazan?
Yes.
Krug?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Mr. Zimmerman, I'm sorry, but your variance request for the sign has been denied. Thank you for attending and possibly we may see you next month for the postponed item. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, I'll move on to uh, other business. And uh, before I turn it over to the board members, as if some of you aren't aware, one of our, I think, longest-tenured board members of this board has recently submitted his resignation. Greg Butts has been a member on this board since 1999. And I understand he deliberated over literally hundreds of cases over his tenure. So I just want to offer my congratulations and thanks to Mr. Butts. I know that uh, it can be challenging in a community of our size to even get enough individuals to fill a board. And Mr. Butts uh, certainly served a role for over 20 years. So I'd like to extend my thanks. The other thing I would like to um, talk about is uh, Ms. Ward, thank you for accepting the request to uh, sit as a permanent member. I glean that quite possibly that has to be formalized, but uh, I want to remind everybody, or at least everybody knows watching, that uh, I remember when you first started, and I think it was your second tenure here just a, a year or two ago, that you were actually in the audience all the time as an alternate, no matter what. And I remember that coming in very handy as we were, uh, there might have been one time, we didn't have a quorum, had you not have been there. So because you did show up, uh, you were able to sit and help uh, help us dispense of the uh, business of the applicant. So congratulations and thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm honored to sit with this uh, group of dedicated citizens of Berkeley. So I look forward to um, the next several years of serving on the board.
Thank you. So with that being said, is there any other business that any other, anybody wants to present? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to liaison report. Councilmember Hennan?
Yeah, so I, like you, also wanted to thank Mr. Butts for his service to the city. But also, um, at our city council meeting last night, we did approve Ms. Ward um, as a permanent member of the ZBA. So that is already official. Um, I didn't have any other updates for the ZBA members, but I did want to um, suggest to staff that I wanted to echo some of the comments that I heard tonight, that I'm definitely interested in planning commission council looking at, can we trade some parking flexibility for green infrastructure similar to how we do for um, bikes? And, and I do think we all can see that um, our parking regulations for banks in particular are probably too strict, probably ran at a time when more people were physically going to the banks. And that's something we need to revisit too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hennan. Okay, at this time, I'd like to, uh, no one else has any comments? Okay, sorry. This time, I'd like to move on to public comment. The public has the opportunity to speak on anything not relating to the agenda. To speak during public comment, participants in the webcast can utilize the raise hand function by selecting manage participants on the bottom of your dashboard and then select the more button on the bottom right-hand corner. Our moderator will call your name aloud and unmute you so that you can speak. For those who have called in, you can be placed in the queue for public comment by selecting star nine. Our moderator will announce the last four digits of your phone number for recognition and unmute you so that you can speak. Participants will have three minutes to speak as they would if we were meeting in person. Once your three minutes are up, you will be muted by our moderators. Additionally, comments can be submitted prior to or at this time to zoning@berkeleymish.net where residents and community members can submit public comments as well. Your email must be able to be read in less than three minutes. Given the circumstances with the virtual space, we may not be able to read through all of the email comments, but know that we will have them stored and acknowledged on the public record. To participate in public comment, you can dial by phone at one three one two six two six six seven nine nine and enter the meeting ID nine five two eight two seven eight four two zero zero. At this time, we'll review public comments. Erin, you begin with any emails or comments we've received prior to this meeting.
Nope, we haven't received any emails.
Thank you. And Ms. Mathis, do we have anyone waiting in the queue to speak?
Uh, we do not at this time, sir.
Okay. All right, well, at this time, I will close the public hearing. And I want to thank everybody for attending and I will adjourn the meeting. Have a great evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Stay safe.